Meeting to order, a minute late. All rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A quick note, Molly McCoy-St. Jean will not be with us this evening. She had a planned trip. Let's get started with, do we have anyone here for public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, we will table that time until the end of the meeting. Anyone have comments for school board member updates? Bridle, do you want to do anything on?
Public hearing, 5 to 7 at the selectmen's meeting room this Thursday night. All are welcome.
Professional development committee met yesterday, reviewed the grants, and Mr. Dutton went over certification from each of the buildings. It was talk about this coming Friday's half day and what each of the buildings, what was going on in each of the buildings for professional development. I think that was kind of the gist of it.
We just had a PTA meeting. One thing to mention is for parents to keep an eye out for sign-up geniuses that are coming out for three upcoming events: Teacher Appreciation Week, Wicked Wonderful Wednesdays at Marston, and Week of Wonder at Center. So they are looking for volunteers for those events. They are also getting ready for the Harlem Wizards game, which is coming up in a couple of months, and they had a great turnout for volunteers for that event. And keep an eye out, we are also going to do Party on Park again, I believe, on June 7th. So, fun stuff coming up with the PTA. Everybody have anything else? Mr. Robitaille?
Let's get going with... Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a good holiday season and welcome back. Just to highlight some things that are upcoming at Center School, kind of hit the ground running last week with the first five-day week, so we're gearing up for our mid-year benchmarks, so it'll give us some fresh data for our progress monitoring and, you know, team time PLCs to discuss data, make sure our intervention groupings are correct, and that students are receiving what they need. So we're looking forward to administering those and getting a fresh set of eyes on Acadians, Dibbles, and Star for first and second grade. So, school's been busy already. We have an all-school meeting coming up in January. Kindness Matters is the theme, hosted by our first grade, so we're looking forward to that. Our building representatives have continued their work with demonstrated success as we look to find two programs to pilot this spring in mathematics. So we're looking forward to our next meeting this coming Thursday. And then just an update for Center School, we're continuing some work on writing as we've updated our ELA unit, so a small committee is going to be getting together to be studying and taking some work from the Writing Revolution 2.0. So looking forward to getting that group together and discussing how we can continue to further enhance our writing instruction at Center. Just a couple highlights from December, it was a very busy month with holidays. You know, my first time going through this season at Center School, so it was awesome to welcome the Winnicott High School Jazz Band and Chamber Singers right before break. They did a great job engaging with our age group and getting them excited about the season, just a very talented group of high school students, so it was awesome to have them come over. We have the Frosty Fair the Thursday before break, so again, thank you to all the volunteers that came out to make that event special. For some students, that's the only gift they get to provide to their family members, so a lot of happy faces leaving the gymnasium. So that event went very well, thank you to all the volunteers. We had our first playgroup session last Friday, so that went well. We had, not a huge group, but it was a good way to get started, so we'll continue to get the word out. Again, for Hampton residents, that's children, you know, very young children up to age four, hosted at Center School, 9:00 to 10:30 on Fridays. So, off to a good start, and I am open to any questions the board might have. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think we're good. Thank you. Mr. Sadler?
I don't want to mess up your agenda. Would it be okay if after my report I brought my team up, since we're already up there?
Of course.
That way they don't have to wait. Okay, fantastic stuff taking place this month. Glad to see everyone. We just had Northeast Passage here. If you remember, we, Ms. Cruz actually came in last year and spoke a little about it, and we showed you a video on kind of inclusivity, disability awareness, things like that. It's a group out of UNH, and so the students had a really meaningful, I think, experience learning about it and then participating in it. And we were fortunate this year because our staff meeting happened to be the same week that we had all of the materials and resources already in our building. So, as a staff, Ms. Cruz led us in some games of handball and some of the similar conversations and dialogues that our students experienced. So it was a really engaging opportunity, I think, for everyone inside of our school. Moving forward and looking forward, this month we're going to have Get Your Math Games on, which is a fifth-grade extended learning opportunity that takes place before school. It really is about fact fluency and building foundational math skills through games. It's just a wonderful opportunity that some of our fifth-grade teachers put on. Our spelling bee for fifth grade is going to take place on Thursday, January 23rd. It changed after we printed our agenda to you. So that will be videotaped, of course, by our technology department and then aired, so best of luck to all of our fifth graders that are participating in that. And we will also have a school-wide morning meeting at the end of the year. Marston has historically celebrated the National Great Kindness Challenge. This year it will be January 27th to 31st. So we'll be getting together with our entire school community on the 24th to sort of kick that off and launch it. Sneak preview, but we won't tell anything. Mr. Carlson has a new song he's been working on with the students, and just some other great opportunities taking place for our school community. So I'll take questions about my report, and then I'd love to invite my team up. All right. Okay. Well, without further...
Do you want to add?
Sorry, Nick, I know you're in the back somewhere. Without further ado, I'm going to introduce my physical and education and health teacher, Ms. Cassie Cruz, and then, of course, our music teacher slash choral director, Mr. Gus Carlson, fantastic members of our integrated arts team. I'm going to let them talk a little more, and they have a video for you about a cross-curricular interdisciplinary unit that they created and have been doing with most of our students in PE and health classes. So, no further ado.
Thank you for having us this evening. So I'm Cassie Cruz, I'm the PE and health teacher at Marston.
And August Carlson, the music teacher at Marston.
So we would like to show you this wonderful unit we do with the muscles and bones and how we combine our subject areas to make a really meaningful learning experience for the kids.
But first, we're going to quiz you. So Cassie is going to ask you to point to a bone, and if you would just point to, everyone in the audience too, please, if you would just point to the bone that she says, and then I'm going to tell you to point to a muscle, and if you would just point to that muscle. Okay, so Cassie, if you would go first.
All right, the first one is your cranium.
Excellent, excellent. You guys had very good elementary school teachers. If you could point to your trapezius. Your trapezius. Oh, oh, well, all right. Good, good job, good job.
Okay, the next bone is your humerus. Your humerus.
Upper arm.
It's, it's okay to look around the room. No, up here, up here, up here. Not the lower arm, up. All right, if you could, if you could point to your latissimus dorsae. Your latissimus dorsae. He, he, he's got it, he's got it. They're like wings up your back, wings up your back. Ms. Cruz?
Yeah, okay, we'll do one more. Point to your mandible. Mandible, yeah.
And, and if you could point to your hamstrings. Good, all right, not too, not too bad. We kept it on the easy side. But, so we started this unit years ago. It was originally a bones unit, and then it became a bones and muscle unit. The third grade just does bones, and the fourth grade adds on their muscles, with the fifth grade as well. By the time they leave at fifth grade, they really know all their bones and muscles, like they really know them, they can point to them, they can build skeletons, they can put the muscles on top of the skeletons, and then we add a PE element where they have to build the skeletons as a puzzle.
Yep, yeah, so the students are divided into groups, and we have each team build the skeleton, and then they incorporate the muscles if they're in fourth and fifth grade as well. And we practice some of the skills we've been doing in PE class, so part of the game that we play is I'll have the kids practice their throwing and catching, if that's something we've been doing. So we try to incorporate the different skills they've been learning in our classes as well to the game.
So, if, before we show you the video, you know, I kind of want to show you the song, the first song they learn. If you feel comfortable, you can stand up. You don't have to, though. And if you would just join after me, if everybody would just say, "cranium." "Mandible." "Clavicle." "Sternum." "Scapula." "Humerus." Make sure your palms up. "Radius." "Alna." "Femur." "Patella." "Tibia." "Fibula." And then all of the bones in your fingers and toes are called. Anyone know? "Phalanges." "Phalanges." So, all right, try to keep up with me. Ready? We're going to do it together. "Cranium, mandible, clavicle, sternum, scapula, humerus, radius, alna, femur, patella, tibia, fibula, phalanges." You might recognize a song that goes with that.
You're learning the bones, but you're also running around having fun. It's, learning's sometimes not that fun, but it's fun when you're moving around.
I think it helps because it's hard when you're just sitting down and looking at the board, but when you're moving around, it's easier to focus for some people, and you got to have fun with your friends.
I think it helps because you, like, you kind of want to do it because it's more fun, and it's catchy, so it kind of sticks in your brain. And I think it's just more fun than just saying them and having to memorize them, like seeing them in order and touching them with your hand.
I think yes, because it's funner and also, and it can help you concentrate sometimes more with certain people, like certain people don't like learning with, like, just like doing papers and stuff like that, so I think it will stick in your head if it's like music and dancing. Yeah.
Yeah, so that's pretty much a summary of our lesson. Thank you for having us tonight.
Thanks for coming in.
I'll just extend, you know, a thanks to the board and also the community. I've been here for a long time, we've always been extremely supportive of the arts. We have amazing integrated arts programs at all three schools, and so when we get to showcase things like this and let you know that the support you're giving us comes right back, and the kids are really having an awesome time with what they're doing, it just means a lot to us. So thank you again for your support.
Thank you.
And tomorrow is National Elementary School Teacher Day, so I'd like to say shout-out to all the elementary school teachers tomorrow. It's your day.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell? Come on down.
All right, that's a tough act to follow, but I'll do my best. Happy New Year, everyone, welcome back. December was great. My first September in Hampton Academy was, I'm sorry, December. Sorry, I'm getting my, my months all mixed up. It was great to have the holiday season kickoff with some excellent door decorations. This year was by subject area, so each advisory was able to dive in a little bit deeper into their content area, pick a sub-sub, a sub-topic, and decorate each one of the doors based on the subject area that their classroom is in. It's great, it really created a different vibe within the building, it supported some team collaboration and team-building activities with our advisories. We had several students go down to the elementary schools to read books. That was spearheaded by one of our students, so it was great to see more student involvement. We always like to have our older kids come, go down to the, to the younger schools. Another team-building activity, our staff for student volleyball and nitro ball was an excellent hit, and it was great to, to see the competitive side of our students. We had some excellent performances, both by our chorus and our band. I heard one of them went a cappella for a couple minutes, so that was great to, great to hear. We capped it off with our student council dance, which was excellent, thanks to Laura Bowden and Nicole Wilcox. It was, it was excellent. I think Wendy had heard, it was basically everything you can think a middle school dance would be. It was exciting. Big shout-out to our Students of the Month from November, Colin Roy, Brooke Berry, Jordan Mason O'Brien, Alexa McSweeney, Claire Higgins, Brindle Dion, Kaylee Hallemoin, and Paige Barry. We're excited, our eighth-grade oratoricals are beginning, some exciting topics that they are starting. Our STAR testing is this week. Quarter three ends on January 27th, and yeah, we're excited for some professional development that we have going on. Some great work with demonstrated success and exciting for our math department to get all aligned. We have a conference at Nelms tomorrow to examine our schedule and work with other middle schools in the area to see how we can reflect our values in our schedule. And on Friday, we have Positive School Solutions coming, Sarah Fillion, and we're going to be talking about refilling our toolbox and making sure that we are handling any challenging behaviors and/or, you know, just making sure that we're refreshed for the, for the back end of the year. So, that's my report. Do you guys have any questions?
I think we're good. Did you, you good? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Dr. DeSilva-Napton?
Good evening, Happy New Year. So you have my report, and we are so excited to get a $500 donation from the Seacoast Public Health Network. As you know, our Hatch Committee is just zipping right along here. We're looking for money, applying for grants, and we got the playgroup up and going, so we have some funds there for some of the consumables, the Play-Doh, and things that kids will, you know, consume, not consume, but use up, and we need to re-buy it. So, if that's a donation, you guys can do it however you do for donations, to accept that. And as Mr. Robitaille said, the playgroup is up and running, so please, every Friday, 9 o'clock, meet on the playground. If you have a child between the ages of zero and four, we would love to see you. And then we've been doing, I feel like, a bundle of referrals. I was just reflecting on why it feels like a heavy load, and I just think it's because we're challenged with our, you know, staff shortages, our part-time school psych at Hampton Academy, we have open case manager. I mean, we're dealing with it, we have contracted personnel, but it definitely puts a strain on the system. So I just want to assure the board that we are actively seeking to fill all these positions within this spring so that we will not have to contract next year. And just to remind people, why we had to contract was, we had very, very, very late resignations. We're talking about June and a couple of them in July that we were hard-pressed to fill. So we are looking for a school psychologist, we're looking for a speech pathologist, we're looking for a speech assistant, so come on down.
Two case managers.
And two case managers, you got it. Yes, so that's all I have in my report. Do you have any questions for me?
How many were at the playgroup?
Oh, we had, there were six kids and five families.
Okay. It was a great turnout. We're continuing to kind of encourage storytime families to come, and they've been very interested.
Mm-hmm. Yep, and we just referred someone there the other day who went through our referral system, and then, you know, if people go through the system and they have a different direction to go in, this is another resource that we can point our families to.
Is this a program that is in other places in New Hampshire?
The playgroup? No.
Well, this Hatch program.
Well, there are some, yeah, sure, there are some alliances around. There's one in Milford. We started, it's just an alliance, so there are certainly alliances around the state, and there's a state kind of workshop for people who have alliances.
They have similar alliances in other states?
You know what? I don't know, I would assume so.
What, and my other question was, that Friday morning, what were the, what's the time on that?
It's 9:00 to 10:30. So 9 o'clock on the playground, we play outside, weather permitting, and then we head inside to the...
Know of someone, how do you do a referral?
They can actually just show up at 9 o'clock, or we also have QR codes that they can register. Patrice Baker, I would say, Mark Robitaille, anybody at Center School, or Patrice Baker, or myself, they could just send an email to us.
There are handouts available at the, there are papers at the library?
And at the library, yep.
In the children's room?
Right at the...
This is similar to 30 years ago when the Hampton Community Coalition came forth and did this, and Village Preschool evolved. It's the same, it's the same process.
Oh, nice, okay, well, here we go again, I guess. But the alliance itself has really just taken off. It's called the Hampton Alliance for Thriving Children, and it's really, we just developed it from the grassroots, myself, and, you know, it's been about a year now, and boy, as you saw the directory, I've put it in my board report, we have over 20 affiliates. We have monthly meetings at the library. It's just really, really exciting to see everybody around that table. I mean, every month, there's 10 to 15 people sitting around the table, and they're all from a different organization, and every, every time we go around and introduce ourselves, someone says, "Oh, my gosh, I didn't know that. Wow, can I connect with you?" And then, "Can I connect with you?" And it's just this really wonderful connection that's really just growing. So it's exciting. Thanks, I think. I wonder, can we, oh, can we hear from Emily Fixler?
Yes, I was going to, I just, Ed, we've got a contract? Do we need to do something?
Oh, the contract, yeah, to accept the donation?
Do we need to do something with the contract?
Yeah, I would...
Oh, I see.
It's a donation, it's a, I just put that in there.
Do you want to do an hour, do you want to wait and do?
It's up to the $500 donation?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's up to you, we can do it whenever you'd like.
Why don't we go ahead, we'll do that when we do these other ones from Center.
Sure.
And yeah, why don't we have Emily go ahead, and since she's sort of next in our stack anyway, and we'll go ahead and have her do her, her update.
Perfect, thank you. Emily Fixler is a district social worker, she's going to report today.
Emily Fixler, district social worker, like Lois said. Thanks for having me. I prepared a brief presentation, so feel free to interrupt and ask any questions, or at the end, I'm fine with that as well. You have my board report, I do write one each month, so if you have any questions or feel like you need more information or something's missing, you can always reach out to me. I will clarify, on my board report, I put numbers each month for McKinny Vento and outreach for the district, and you can see those fluctuate, kind of all in the same ballpark, but just to clarify, McKinny Vento is the term for the umbrella of students that qualify for McKinny Vento, so that means they qualify as being homeless. Outreach is a list I maintain that's more families who are on the cusp, or they just miss it, or they require support. So I want to make sure they're sort of on my radar as well as I maintain contact with And the holidays are a great time for me to connect with families, and this past year was no different. You'll see here, I do a lot of work with some of the school resource officers for the holidays, the police department, the fire department in Hampton is very generous. Student council at Hampton Academy always does great Thanksgiving baskets for families, as well as the Giving Tree has been going on since I've been here, and I'm in my fifth year, and that has been going well. And every year, it's just a great way to sort of connect with families I haven't been able to reach, help them navigate resources, and help families have a great holiday. So I was asked to just share a little bit about my role and how I'm helping families in the Hampton School District, so I'll start briefly. That social workers can work in a variety of agencies, and in my role here, I'm a school social worker, so I am a trained mental health professional with a degree in social work, and essentially, I serve as the link between the home, school, and community in providing direct and indirect services for families and students. And in case you didn't know, there is a whole week to celebrate school social workers, and it's, this year it's March 2nd through the 8th. That's a little hard to see, but I'll explain. So, the role of a social worker in regards to student access, success is really important when you have a population who needs further assistance navigating resources or connecting with the home if a family may be hard to reach. So I broke it down into multiple, multiple facets, and the first one is related services. So, for example, I might work with problems in the home that impact a student's day-to-day in the classroom, so working with a parent to facilitate their children's education to be the most effective for them. Some services to students is, I do meet with students new this year, as I do now have my clinical social work license, and I meet with students for counseling as related to the IEP, so that may mean related to social challenges at school, behavioral challenges, and making sure students get what they need at school in regards to counseling. Some services to families, I would say the biggest one is really trying to alleviate stress in the home, and I'll go a little bit more into detail, but that is essentially to alleviate stress, to enable the child to participate successfully, to the best of their ability at school. And then services to staff, providing direct support to staff and helping them better understand students' issues that impact them, impact them, whether it be cultural issues, societal issues, economic issues, these all may impact students in the classroom. And then, being the liaison to community resources, I work closely with resources directly in Hampton, but there's also resources in the Seacoast area that I can direct and refer families to. And the caseload is definitely, has stayed the same relatively since I've been here. Like I said, it fluctuates, but another service is providing case management for those families. So whether that's daily, weekly, or monthly check-ins with families, that is how I try to case manage that number of families. Did you know that 80% of mental health services nationwide are provided by social workers, and school social workers can generate revenue by billing Medicaid for mental health services provided in schools? Hopefully this link. And I just wanted to share that in schools, multi-tiered systems of support is used commonly, and social workers in schools also practice in a tiered system. And an example of a social worker practice at tier one is... one is McKinny Vento or foster care. So, that is definitely part of my role here. There's multiple other things that a social worker can do at tier one. So, that's kind of like the bigger picture. Tier two, you're kind of honing in a bit more. So, something that I do here is, I do see kids for group counseling, or individual counseling. I also work closely with the mental health team on family engagement, and how I'm trying to reach families. And then, at the tier three level, which would be the most intense support, would perhaps be working with students who need a behavioral assessment. So, whether that's working closely with the BCBA to help, help form that. So, those are students who need the most intense level of support. So, I just wanted to point that out, that it is similar in that regard to teachers, that social workers do practice in a school, on a tiered system. So, sometimes it can be hard to imagine what it might look like to reach out for help. But luckily, I do have an outreach phone for work, which I am very thankful for, because families utilize that to reach me on a daily basis, whether it's through email, calling, or texting. And luckily, too, that phone can translate, too, because there are families who English isn't their first language. So, that is also very useful. So, for example, on here, you can see the phone has a missed call from a father, a text message from a father needing help for a field trip for his son. And a teacher has also sent an email, just letting me know the student is really struggling in class. So, those are some ways that families may reach out. So, a parent may reach out directly, a teacher may reach out directly. I also may get referrals from community resources, or if I'm at a community event, and a family sees me, they may come up and ask me questions, or just try to get to know me better. And the foundation of a social worker is, in a school, is really building relationships with families. And that's all around respect and privacy for the family. So, I may check in with the family daily, weekly, or monthly. It really just depends on what that family needs. And it's so important, important to build that relationship, because you never know down the road what may happen to, to a family. And essentially, one of my main roles is to mobilize resources to alleviate stress for families, so that the student can be as successful as possible at school. I may help them to navigate these resources, or point them in the right direction. And for example, I may do a home visit. I'm always going with an SRO to, to someone's house, just to check in, or see what they need. Sometimes, it does help. I have also done home visits with outside referrals, to do like a warm handoff. If a family needs more support than I can give as a school, maybe they need a referral to, for example, Families First, which is in Portsmouth. We may go together to do that warm handoff. It does take courage to ask for help, and it can be hard. But, some of the common things that families may reach out for are help around housing, or utilities, food and clothing, vehicle repair, repairs and gas. So, those are all basic needs that families might reach out for. As well, families may reach out for support around finding outside mental health providers, or counseling for their children, family support in childcare, and health and dental care. You could see, that could be very overwhelming, if one person was dealing with all of those issues. So, I am thankful that in this area, there are quite a few resources to refer families to, as well as just having the support of a social worker to navigate this, because it can be very difficult. And sometimes, I also get asked, like, what if a family doesn't reach out, or how do they know I exist? I, I try to be as visible as possible, whether that's attending a community event, like the holiday parade, or getting myself out there. Like, Dr. Costa frequently puts me in her newsletter. That's another way to get my name out there. Making contact at staff meetings, so a teacher may see me, and that may kind of trigger them to reach out about a student. And just putting myself out there as much as possible. And I remind myself, I am only one person. So, I do it to the best of my ability, and make myself as visible as possible. That's a little hard to see, too. But, this is a resource list for the Hampton School District, and there is my contact information on the bottom as well. And it is really nice for families. It's usually given out at the beginning of the school year, at new student registrations. It goes in their packet. And it lists out all of the area resource list. So, it is really kind of, it's color-coded and broken down into food and clothing, housing assistance, healthcare and dental care, counseling, mental health, childcare, and the school numbers, because parents might need those, too. So, a part of my role is obtaining and coordinating resources to meet student needs, and helping school districts receive adequate support from other agencies. For example, I work very closely with Seacoast Mental Health Center, which is the community mental health center in the area. Right now, they're actually running a group for students at Center and Marston. So, I'm working in conjunction as well with the school counselors to get that group running. And another valuable resource that is new this year, that the district has offered to families, which is a great resource, is the Cook Center. That's now available, and it's very accessible for families to access that at home. And I will take questions, but I also just wanted to quickly show that on the SAU 90 page, I do have a website. That took a little bit of time for me to make, I think I did it summer ago or so. And it has contact information on there as well. If you scroll down at the bottom, there's links to the Free and Reduced Lunch application, resources on food security, a link to the school counseling department page, mental health resources, and more information about McKinny Vento law and student information. And that, if you were on the page, it would be under operations, and then, social work services. Just a little bit about my role, and how I'm helping families. But, if you have any questions, I'll take them. Or, you can also feel free to reach out.
Great presentation. Um, one question, just that I see this a lot from parents, and I think I, I know the answer, but I'd love to hear you say it. There are a lot of concerns in the community about children receiving mental health services and counseling at school, with their parents not being involved, and not being aware.
Okay.
And I guess, my question is, are our parents notified, brought in, are they aware when their children are receiving mental health services at school?
So, if I s-
Direct, direct mental health services.
So, I will, I can also let Dr. Sylvan Acton clarify, if she thinks I'm incorrect.
That's fine.
But, I would say that in this, this role of a school social worker is to provide services for counseling related to the IEP, so the Individualized Education Plan. So, if that's impacting their academics, now, students may have other social issues, mental health issues that impact that. But, mental health services, if someone was wanting to seek outside services, they could do that as well. Does that answer your question?
Sure.
So, meant, I-
Do you kind of know what I'm, what I was, sorry, Lois is headed down.
Yep.
So, I would say, any direct mental health service, the parent would know about it.
That was, exactly.
Definitely, absolutely would know about it. It would be in an IEP, it would be in, in a 504. Who knows, it would be a written document, there would be written permission. The Seacoast groups that we're running, they are, they get permission from parents, too. Heck, we even get permission for Title I services, parents sign permission. I mean, so, yes. Any direct mental health service, the parent is fully aware.
Perfect. Yes. Les, did you have a question?
And, and just to clarify, the Cook Center is for parents. It's really about helping parents help children. So, we really want to help our families, but we do this in tandem. We believe that parents are the children's first educator, and we are here to support families and children in that journey. We are the supporting role, responsible first and foremost for their education.
That's great. I just wanted to say that out loud. That's all.
I appreciate it.
Perfect, perfect answer. Yep.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions or comments for Emily? Thank you for coming up. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Sylvan Acton. Where are we? So, Tim Smith is not feeling great tonight. So, you do have, I believe you have, yep, we have a report from him. If anybody has any questions, you can let me know, or you can get in touch with him directly. He's not here, right?
He is not.
Yeah, okay.
He is not. In fact, he was going to do an AI presentation this evening, but he is unable to be here. So, no.
Okay. So, for his first meeting, we would like to welcome Mr. Tim Harrington, our new facilities director. Come on down.
Hi, all.
Hey, how are you?
So, I don't have a report, per se. Nine days in. I do want to say that I have been welcomed by everybody. Open arms, it's from administration on down. Has been great. Once I do get my feet wet, I'm hoping to sit down with all administrators, with the administrative teams from each school, just to go over what's going well, what's going not so well. I've been meeting with the custodial staff to meet everybody. I've got everybody, I think that was just last week, Mariah and I went over and met everybody. So, yeah, just getting my feet wet and diving in. So, I'd have also met with Lois, and Mariah, and Keith to go over the projects that are happening, that are in the works. So, yeah, did a lot of that today, too. Yeah.
We're working on the HVAC at Center, right?
Yes, yep.
Is in, in process.
Yep, yes, correct.
Yep.
Yep, we're very, we're very pleased that we have a really good plan moving forward. We know that originally, when we started the project, we had to do some asbestos abatement last summer. So, that pushed back the project. Now, unfortunately, we are, believe it or not, two years out from when we started this project. So, we are going back to the people who gave us the first proposal to talk about reposting it, because we know in two years, a lot changes. But, we have a really good plan moving forward to get the RFP out, hopefully next week, so that we'll be in a good place to do the work over the summer, given the extensive HVAC upgrades to Center School. We are, we are concerned that it could be potentially two phases, but we'll know more as things unfold.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
To a wrap.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any other questions?
You and Keith are, you touched base on like, the entranceway to the SAU office.
Keith is still coming in and answering questions. Would that be an accurate way to put it?
He's, he's made himself available.
Yes, he has.
You have the, you have the notebook with the 40 pages of to-do lists and things like that.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, we're all set then.
It's only 40?
I know.
I bet he has his own 40-page book of things.
Button back, button back.
Button back, all right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Did we, did we take the asbestos money out of the Warren article? Is that not part of the Warren article?
So, I want to say, and Mariah, you can answer it, we were able to use some of the ESRA funds for the asbestos.
Okay.
So, that, that helped us with that.
Yeah, we voted on it last budget season. It's already been paid, already done.
Okay, so, how much do we have in the, um,
Warren article for the HVAC? The whole amount still. Nothing's been touched on that.
Nothing's been touched. So, we're all set there.
That was the two, two million?
Two million. So, it just depends on how much costs have gone up.
Right.
That's right.
Hello, Mrs. Ford.
Hi. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Okay. So, Dr. Costa asked me tonight to have some numbers ready for you. The student and staff debt, and where we stand today. So, I didn't know if you want me to break it up, but the staff debt through the district, which is 54 staff members, $863. And I don't know if you want me to break up by school, but the total for the district of student owes is $5,534, and that's for 122 students. So, we feed about, hmm, five, 98 kids a day. This kind of gives you where we are. So, 122 students through the district. And that's where they owe. And then, secondly, Dr. Costa asked me, well, how much meetings do I do with Emily Fixler? And we always meet at the beginning of the year, and then periodically through the year, and back and forth. So, I thought, well, I called her, I said, "We need a monthly meeting. So, we're going to do the third Thursday of every month, face to face. If it's one kid, one not, we're going to meet once a month throughout the year." So, this way, I think maybe we can just put our heads together, figure it out, help each other, and help more families.
Are any of these 122 students on Free and Reduced Lunch?
No. That's strictly paid kids.
Okay, so, that's about 15% of our population. And how much is our Free and Reduced percentage of students? Do you know that?
We're still 16%.
So, you take the 16, and you add the 15, that's 31% of our students are somewhat food insecure.
Yes, yes.
I, I will say, looking at the math, it does come out to about $45 a student. Saying $5,500 seems large. When you divide it out, it's on average, $45 per family.
Yeah. And I think, I don't know if Mariah remembers, did we end up with $2,600 last year, student debt at the end of June? I think it was around there, 24. I mean, again, I have to, I'm going to, after Christmas, after the holidays,
Yep.
Things settled down, and then,
Yep.
I was actually walked out of my office today, and I found two checks for $300. So, that's not even added to this yet. So, I'm getting it, but slow, slowly. But, but there's still, by the way, I also got a letter from a parent that said, you know, "My expenses are this, this month. My expenses are this, and I have no money for your food." So, I also got that today, as I was walking out the door. So, there's people that need help, but.
The reason why I asked for these figures is, we cut through the budget season, $100,000 out of special aid. We cut other things. The state has cut 66, down to 66% of the assistance they're going to give with special aid. If we have a lot of people who are now food insecure, then we better plan on that, because I'm telling you, in January, February, and March, they're not going to be paying their food bills. Especially with the cost of the grocery store for families, especially for food, fuel, all of that. They're not going to be able to pay. So, what is our thoughts? What are we going to do? I mean, it's, Mary, we'll see it go up and up. And is that, you know, I think that it's open for discussion.
Budget flat for, right? In and out for food service?
Yep.
Do I remember that correct?
It's flat.
Yeah.
So, whatever is extended, there's the goal is to get the food service.
Right.
I, I think that there's a couple of things we can do. One, we can, we can keep track of it. I think that's important. But, the other piece is, is that I think it would be important for our social worker to follow up with some of those families that may not be aware of the Free and Reduced forms. We know that one of the things that we're talking about, even at a state level, is we would love to see there, the, it be 300% at poverty level, so that we could get more families to qualify for the Free and Reduced. You know, I, I don't know if it'll happen. We would love to see that happen. But, I do think that it's, it's going to take some outreach on our behalf to, we understand that families are falling on hard times, but we kindly ask that they do fill out the Free and Reduced forms. And even just if we have another person like our social worker, that's going to walk them through it. Sometimes, people get a little intimidating. And I think, you know, Emily said it this evening, it's hard to ask for help. But, I think that if we see that they need help, maybe it's up to us to offer the help, so they don't have to ask. So, that's what I would like to see come out of those meetings.
And that's right.
And we can track, and we can track it, you know? Is that, is the money, is it going up? Is it going down? Is it stable? I think it's a, it's a great question. And it's something that, you know, Mary can update me weekly, if we need to.
It is good to remember to try to reinforce every couple of months to do the Free and Reduced, because it does affect our grants. Title I is all on Free and Reduced, which helps our students.
And, and again, I don't know if you know this, but when I have families that owe over $100, I send them a snail mail. First, I, you know, I call, but send them the snail mail with the application, with the self-addressed stamp envelope. They don't even have to come back and drop the application off. So, I've- So, I've been doing it this year, sending that periodically. Again, I've gotten a couple back, not as many, and I have decided it was like, so, but I'm also trying to make it easy for them. Fill out the form. Here's a self-addressed stamped envelope. Send it back.
And you are the only person that sees the form.
100%, I am the only person that sees the form.
Nobody else is going to know.
No one, I see the forms, I process the forms, I put the forms away. I mean, you know, obviously, a state comes in or somebody with that. But yes, but I, yes, I'm the only one sees those forms.
Two, two comments. We, you said something about outreach. And let's remind everyone outreach as it relates to our state reps and state senator because last year there was actually a, a law proposed to increase the, the poverty rate on free and reduced lunch to 300%. And it was voted down. Where lots of other things, our, our business taxes were cut, lots of other, lots of other things were cut in our state and we, but we don't have the money to make sure that, that everybody can afford lunch. Side note, maybe what we could look at monthly, too, is a comparison. So, knowing that it's 5,500 is great. I would be sort of curious where we were last year at this same point.
Last year at this time.
You know what I mean? A little, a little direct comparison, if it was 5,500 last year in January and maybe the year before, and we see that this is, that's how it goes. I think that would give us some more information on, on how the, on how the year is going.
Yes, I could grab those numbers from last year and we'll compare them for next board meeting or I'll put it in my report.
That would be great.
This question is for you and it's from Mariah at the same time. Mariah, we have staff that owes $863. If worse came to worse, we could deduct that from their paychecks or not?
Yes. So, yes, we could.
So, we don't have to worry about that.
So, I usually handle that at the end of June. And they're not allowed to leave and sign out without having their bill completely paid.
Right.
Just curious.
Yeah.
So, yeah, June, they check out and I give them the okay and they pay up their bills.
We don't have that same option with the $5,534.
I wish we did.
We also aren't going to, some people that come and they don't pay and we can't get them to fill out the form. And I know some people play the game, believe me, I know, but a lot of people aren't playing the game at this point. We're not going to stop feeding their kids, right?
I will not stop feeding their kids.
That's just the important thing is we've got to, you've got to take care of the kids.
Exactly. Exactly, so.
And there is no special lunch. There's no special lunch for free and reduced.
No. The only thing I think we agreed upon was no extras if they owe. That's what we agreed upon.
Yep.
So, we kind of started doing that at six, seventh and eighth. So, you can't get extras.
You don't need ice cream.
Right.
Just slice of pizza.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You look like you're thinking.
I, well, I'm thinking is if this kid's meal is lunch and he needs two pieces of pizza.
I was thinking the same thing.
Give him the pizza and give me a bill.
Okay.
I know.
Give me a bill for anybody that has a second piece of pizza and he doesn't pay.
And also, I, again, I don't know if you know, but we encourage kids, like, go have some more vegetables. Go have some more fruit. They are entitled to as much fruit and vegetables as they can eat and also go back for seconds. So, we do encourage that, but you don't, I know.
There's nothing like fruit and vegetables for your pizza.
Second slice of pizza or, I don't know, a pear, so, okay.
You are the kindest heart.
I can't.
Food service director, I know, really.
Well, if you recall, we did have a donation in December, right? From one of, one of our churches in town. And we said we were specifically going to use it for the extras.
Yes, and that's why you don't see.
So, we do have, we do have that, that fund available. And that's what we use it for, too. Yeah.
Been paying that off. I've been paying the extras off with the donation money.
Awesome.
Just discouraging that there are states around us that.
That are free.
Free lunch.
Free lunch, free breakfast.
For all schoolchildren.
For all schoolkids.
Yeah.
Good at that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Costa?
Do we want to go back and do the approvals first or, what's your pleasure? Okay, so let's start at Center School. We have from Hannaford's $362.04.
I'd move there.
In favor?
Thank you. And then from Geskis Studios, which does our photos and yearbooks, we have a check for $924 for Center School.
Second. All in favor?
And then, of course, going to the donation that we received for, I want to say $500. Yep, that we have from Seacoast Public Health Network for materials for our newly formed playgroup from Center School. Thank you.
I'd second.
All in favor?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, a lot of that's in my report is things that the principals have already touched upon. But there are a few things that are going on that have happened since I wrote this that I do want to make you aware of. And that is that they are doing some surveying on Bachelor Pond. And Jen Hale informed me of that this week. So, just to make people aware that if they see Dusset Survey Company out on Bachelor Pond, it is because they are doing surveying work there. So, to, just wanted to keep us appraised. We appreciate them obviously informing us of that. The other thing I wanted to make you aware of, that on Tuesday, January 21st, which is next week, we will be, we have been invited by John Niant in the Chamber of Commerce for community crisis planning. And they are looking at, they're having chambers come in from Lewiston, Maine, as well as from the beaches of Rhode Island. And the question that the chamber is asking is, are we prepared to handle this crisis? So, we were delighted to get the invitation. So, there are several members of the leadership team, myself included, that will be attending that breakfast at the Ashworth next Tuesday at 10:00. So, just to make you aware, just another opportunity to collaborate with some of our partners in the area. And we're happy to do that in support of John Niant in the Chamber of Commerce. The other thing I wanted to make you aware of is that we were contacted by Liz Horgan from the Department of Labor and Social Security. And she is asking that our school participate in a survey that looks at the physical demands, the environment and the conditions of the job. So, Mariah and I are working with them and doing what is required of us to participate in this survey. There is, I guess, several, you know, schools that are chosen apparently at random, and we were one of them, to participate in this collection of information. So, I don't think we have a choice, so we will, we will do this and help them in any way we can. So, just to let you know about that. You, you did hear about what happened with Power School. I know I sent something out in my newsletter. I have been working with our technology department, Tim Smith, to determine if we are impacted. It's because we are no longer a, you know, a client of Power School, they really are not communicating with us as much as we would like them to. It has been three years since we did use Power School. But we are trying to determine if we have, if there were any breaches and what that might look like. So, stay tuned for more information. We, we don't have a lot. But potentially, it might be like teacher information. It could be like names and potentially addresses, mother's name, father's name. But we don't have a lot of information about that. So, just kind of making you aware of it. When we decided that, that Power School was not working for us, we went to Alma, which was three years ago, and the state went to Alma probably about a year ago. So, I think it was a good switch in hindsight is 2020, but it, I'm glad that we're there. Anxious Generation is continuing. We had our third meeting on January 7th. And it was great to have just a variety of people in the right here meeting as we talked about how this is impacting our students. Great conversation. We know that we've got some things coming up this month in terms of budget with our budget hearing this Thursday deliberative session on February 5th. Looking forward to that. And then, of course, next week, we are going to join SAU 21 and hold our first legislative roundtable session to discuss some of those proposed bills and their impact on our schools and districts. And we look forward to that. We already spoke about the Cook Center in it. I included a copy of their calendar that they create with our input, as well as the newsletter that we shared with our families. And I, because of the way last month's was written with the bully report, there was one report, one bully report that happened after I did my, my report. So, I included it, but it actually happened before the holiday break and it was substantiated, just to let you know about that. And we have, snow has arrived again this past weekend. And while I was at school on Saturday, I happened to see Tim Harrington, who is here. And I did hear that both he and Keith were out doing the lots on Sunday. So, just to let you know, our facilities are once again being tasked with dealing with our winter weather. And we're, we're so appreciative of all the work that they do. I would want to let you know that we are excited for our math pilot to continue. We have a couple of sessions scheduled this month. And we're looking at January 31st to talk about what those pilots might look like. And the principals talked about the mid-year data that they are collecting as they look at these students and their benchmarks to determine how they are progressing. And just that we are, I am meeting with all of the members of the leadership team to look at their mid-year goals and to talk about their needs and to talk about staffing. We know that that comes up pretty quickly. That's like next month, so that's important. And then, of course, Dr. DeSylvan Apton is obviously monitoring not only our students in district, but also the students that are out of district. So, she makes her way around not only our state, but she does venture down to Massachusetts to ensure that all of our students, we are keeping a pulse on them and their education. I think that's it. Obviously, we're preparing our annual report that we're anxious to share with all of you shortly. Are there any questions from me?
Is it too early, Lois, or did we get any data on how many parents have used the Cook Center?
It is early. We really just started it in December, so. But I'll, I will ask, I know that our mental health team, school psychologists are pushing this out. In fact, you know, for example, I just got an, an email from one of the school psychologists about how some of the children are struggling with homework. And you can, if you took, take a look at, you know, some of our, what's on our calendar, you can see that there's some things here that, you know, might be able to help parents if children are struggling with homework. Or maybe parents want to join the Ask a Therapist Live where they can ask, you know, ask us somebody, you know, what do you do when you're struggling to get your child to complete his or her homework? So, that's January 15th where they can go on live and they can ask any question. So, just trying to look at what's on the calendar, what's happening in our schools and how we can support families. We know that they're very busy, but we at the same time want to be able to help our families because that in turn helps our children.
That's what I was going to say, like, tonight at nine o'clock is the one that, what parents need to know about suicide prevention.
Correct.
And then tomorrow night at eight o'clock is Ask the Therapist Live.
Yep.
I mean, that was pretty important. I had asked Mr. McGowan at the high school because they've had it going for a while. And they had only had, I want to say, six or seven that had made use of the service so far in, I want to say, maybe a half a year.
They don't have the calendar, so, because that's one of the things that they said to me, yeah.
He said, yeah, he didn't, they didn't have the calendar. But he didn't sound discouraged, he didn't sound discouraged because he said it, it's going to take some time for people to catch on to this. And they didn't have the calendar. But he wasn't discouraged and I think he wasn't discouraged because now another SAU and someone who's attached is, is coming on board. So, people will start maybe here and then continue there. So, now we've got the ball rolling at, at a younger grade and continue it on.
Yep.
Another good one is school avoidance.
Yep.
Because there's a lot of times our kids are sick, but they might be really avoiding something.
Well, attendance is always, it can be at this time of year. We, we look at that. But there's a lot of really good stuff that they're putting out there. And so, we do hope that families are taking advantage of what's here. And then, of course, just, I think, a little helpful newsletter that they talk about, Building Better Behaviors: Mental Health Solution for Child Behavior Problems. And really, what to expect in each stage. I think it helps our parents to know what to expect, whether they're three to six years old or 12 to 18 years old, right? It's, it's just good, helpful things. And it's also, this, by the way, newsletter isn't available through Reach My Teach in any language that they want so that there's opportunities to make sure that they're able to understand it. But you can see there's some, you know, warning signs as it, we think about behaviors as part of mental health, right? And then, of course, parenting role models and just different things that we're hoping that will help our families.
This has all been on, on our website, right?
Yes.
Okay. And have we sent home hard copies of this?
So, we have, I've sent it, I've shared it out with the leadership team. I mean, we definitely, we definitely can.
I would recommend, just because I can envision. I'm having visions of a household.
Yep.
And kids are coming and going and parents are coming and going. And there's sports and there's trying to get dinner. And the pandemonium and chaos that goes on in any number of households around our town and whatever. And if you don't have something, a hard copy of something, let's say, tacked to the refrigerator or handy, it, it's not going to be on, it's not going to be on your radar. And I'm thinking maybe if this goes home in a backpack and a parent were to take it out and just hang it on there and see it going by or hang it near a calendar, it might, it might help. They, they might not bring it up on their, you know, on a Chromebook or a computer. But a, a hard copy might help. And I'm saying the other thing, too, all these forms that we are sending out or putting on, you know, once or twice a year, we may need to do a hard copy. Because, again, the chaos that goes on in our homes nowadays, it can be very confusing and you just, it goes fast.
And things change, right? Everything's, and things change.
Yes, and things change.
Right, in, in September, you get your big packet from the school and everything's fine. And you go through and honestly, you throw 90%, what doesn't go back? If you, if it doesn't directly apply to you, you throw it away. And then come December, January, you've got a crisis. You don't have that piece of paper anymore. And you don't know what to do and you don't know who to talk to. So, yeah, I'm just saying, yes, I, I think that's a good point.
Now, a copy at this time of year might be a good reminder to people. And like I said, put it on the refrigerator, hang it near a calendar. Just have it, have that hard copy access.
We could, we can definitely do that. You thinking the calendar would be helpful? Are you thinking the newsletter? Are you thinking both? We can do that. Right, team?
Like I said, I just envision what I know to be happening.
Yeah, I, I gotta admit, I copied it and sent it out to my parents because I thought it was really interesting and important.
Yeah. Thanks, Andrea. We can do that.
Yep. We want to talk about the calendar.
You know, I do want to talk about the calendar because, so today I had, I meet with the union from time to time and I did share this calendar with them because we always like to do a meet and confer. And just a couple of dates that we, as we were looking a little bit more in depth, we're still waiting to hear from SAU 21. And of course, they're waiting for everybody who goes to Seacoast School of Technology, right? But one of the things is that the, we want to correct, instead of the 10th, it's going to be November 11th. Veterans Day is always on Veterans Day, so the 11th instead of the 10th of November. And then the other correction we would probably make is instead of the 1st of April, we would probably go the 3rd of April because we said that we wanted to give people the Friday before the Easter holiday off. And that year, in 2026, Easter Sunday is And that year, in 2026, Easter Sunday is going to be on the 5th. So we would do a half day on the 3rd. So there is a couple of changes here, but we're still waiting, just so you know, from SAU 21. But they had some good feedback for us. Yeah.
Thank goodness you closed.
But we're not ready to vote on this tonight.
Nope, not yet.
Thank goodness you closed on the 2nd of January.
I know. That was, yes. You don't want the kids to come back just for a Friday at the end of the holidays? Did you guys think that was a great idea? Because we can put it back if you need us to.
Yeah.
They're like, what are you talking about? The original calendar for Christmas next year had the kids coming, oh, everybody, coming back on Friday after January 2nd.
And that, that two weeks is priceless.
We can put it back if you want.
Well, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I heard people saying that they really appreciated coming back on Thursday, Friday, because they felt it was a soft start. In fact, with the exception of one or two districts, everybody was back in, even in Massachusetts.
And I think the two days is fine. I think the issue is the single day. Nobody wants to come back.
Agreed.
For one day.
Well, and the, getting the heat started, you know, all that stuff.
Exactly, so.
No, I agree.
All right.
But, yeah, people, I think, would you say people agreed that the two days was a nice soft start? Kind of transitioning kids back, and then we, yeah. Like, yeah, okay.
So...
They'll do the days wherever it is.
They'll say easy peasy, right?
I think we are ready to move on to Mrs. Curtis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Hopefully I don't start coughing. We'll begin, we're going to get through this. Um, you saw my monthly report for December. As always, if you go through it and you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, and I can answer them for you. I put in the food service expenditures. That's looking pretty, pretty good so far. It's still early to tell, but looking good. Summary of the federal grants. We don't, we closed up a lot this year, so just a few basic grants again. There's not many to deal with, but going good with that. Everything's encumbered and set up for the federal grants. The revenues for the month. And then we have our hearing Thursday at 5:00. And with that being said, we had a article come in this afternoon. So we added an Article 5. Is it 6? Article 6. An Article 6. So I did add that to the warrant. We do not have to vote on that. It was a petition warrant article.
Did you say this Thursday, was it 5?
5, yeah.
They changed the time on us.
Budget committee's 5:00.
And they have to be done by 7:00. So if it's not finished by 7:00, they'll have to move the continuation to a different.
Thought my ears were playing tricks on me.
Nope, they changed the time.
Planning Board will be starting at 7:00, so they're, hopefully going to get it done.
Would you like me to read this warrant article, or are you guys?
Would you like me to read it?
Do you want to read it? Do we want to read it?
I feel like we should say what it is. We're adding it to the...
All right.
So this is a, yep, this is a warrant article presented to us by the public this afternoon. It did come with, it was, it says on the petition of 25, but I believe it was 30. Registered voters in the town of Hampton. Shall all departments of the Hampton School District be required to adopt and implement zero-based budgeting when preparing and submitting budgets to the district treasurer and school board for consideration for March 2026 proposals for 2027? Question mark. All Hampton School District departments are to start at $0, justify every expense in each department, and then review each department budget proposal with the Hampton School Board for inclusion in the annual Hampton School District ballot at 2026 town election. Requiring more effort for the department and boards, it avoids the current method of starting with, quote, inheriting, end quote, what was spent the previous year as the starting point for asking for funds for the following year's budget. Zero-based budgeting is adopted in business and at town, county, and state legislatures throughout the country. It is not yet applied at the federal level, although New Hampshire presidential primary candidates from both parties proposed it a year ago for Congress to adopt this method to reduce spending and thus the federal deficit.
So on the warrant article, I am only going to put the first paragraph. I don't have to do the reasoning in the second two paragraphs, just so you know. That was suggested by Gordon Graham.
Okay. That is fine. So that will be number 6.
Yep.
On the school district warrant.
So I will bring that to, on Thursday night, so that they have that. Yes, I added, I, it's attached. It's attached to the warrant articles.
The packet that she gave you has everything, yeah. And those had been confirmed by the town prior to submission.
They have been confirmed by the town, yes.
Yep.
All right. And with that said, we should have the signed warrant articles and the signed default budget and budget posted by, hopefully, next Friday. And that will be posted at the library, the town hall, all the schools. It will be on our website, so you can see those. Also, all of our reports so far that we have been working on for the budget is on our website. So feel free to look at that. If you have any questions about the budget, feel free to reach out to me. Don't forget that we have two elected school board positions open and one elected district clerk open. They're three-year positions. And you would need to register Wednesday, January 22nd to January 31st. We're still going to have that at the town hall. We, since our town clerk is just taking over for this year, and, and we're going to do it at the town hall this year and then see who is voted in for next year and figure out if you will be coming to the SAU office or the town clerk's office. But this year, we are still going to have it at the town clerk's office, so you can feel free to register there. And W2s and 1095Cs for our teachers should be out by the end of this week. We have one issue with our software that they're supposedly updating tonight. So it's all engineing on that upload. So if that goes well, we'll get those all out to the teachers by Friday. 1099s will be mailed out the following week. So I think we're all set for the, the month of January so far, other than my cough. Any questions?
Would you have some water? Please have some water, get a cough drop, we're good.
I feel like my teeth are going to rot out from all the cough drops.
Oh. I'd stop the coffee, I don't know.
Does anybody have any more questions for Mariah? No? All right, I think we're good. Next on the list, we have a retirement.
Yes, on page 56, there is a letter in your packet from Dr. Lois DeSylvan Apton for your review and consideration.
I move that we accept the retirement. Good luck in whatever she's going to do next.
I would second.
With regret?
With regret.
Right, yes. All those in favor? Thank you. We'll see you before. You're not leaving right this minute. Okay, next up is policy review. So we do have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. They are all second reads. Does anyone have any questions?
I would move all five unless someone wants to pull any of them out.
Second.
All in favor? We have, we have a number of minutes. We've gotten our minutes from the, our budget sessions, our, our work sessions from October. So we're going to, I would say, do we want to go through, as with the policies, and do those at one time?
Unless you see any...
Unless there are any comments, any changes. We have one.
Well, did anybody see any changes in any of them? There were quite a few.
I, yeah, I did. I mean, I looked through them, but...
Dani is doing a really nice job with the minutes. Just want to give her a shout out, Dani Albright.
I think we have three. We have October 16th, we have October 30th, and we have November 7th.
And there's a November 25th.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was a special meeting. I didn't know if we wanted to do that one separately. Why don't we just do the work sessions all at once?
So that's the 16th.
Yes, the 30th.
16th, 30th.
And the 7th, I believe. Yes, correct.
16th, 30th, and the 7th.
Yep, okay, so we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? All right, yes.
Thanks, Mariah, for doing those budget work.
Yes, thank you very much. Those are a lot.
Yep.
Okay, so then we have, yes, then we had the special meeting from November 25th, which was primarily to vote on the two new contracts.
I would move that.
Regular minutes from the meeting of December 10th. Does anybody have any changes or comments? Motion to accept. Do I have a second? Thank you, Les. All those in favor? I would like to see if we have anyone here for public comment on agenda items. Seeing none. Do we have any, would anyone like to make a motion to go into non-public? Seeing none. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Just one thing on correspondence, if I could. Laurie Carter reached out to me to present at our next board meeting to talk about the 100th anniversary of the Historical Society and to talk a little bit about the dance that's coming up in May. So she reached out to me just this week. So we'll just, if that's okay, I'll put her on the agenda for February.
Yes, if you don't know, I think the dance is going to be very cool.
Yep.
It's going to be a sort of a costume kind of event, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So we only have two retirements that were given to us.
As of today, on, what's the date? Yes.
And, and when did they have to be in by?
Well, so those, so for teachers, we asked them to have them by November 1st. That is for professional staff. But those, this is, this is, one is a leadership position and one is a year-round position. So that's a little different. Yep. So we appreciate, obviously, the notification. It helps with us. And, you know, Kath, Kathy Tuck has posted for, one is anticipated just because it is a critical shortage area. And then we will also be posting for Kathy's probably, you know, probably in the next month or so. So we're, we're working through those.
Posted Assistant Principal.
The, yes, the interim Assistant Principal has been posted, and we are moving through that process. So we can move from interim principal, interim Assistant Principal to Assistant Principal. Does that make sense? We posted internally, and we are going from there.
Or will we go through?
You need to go into non-public, too. I'm happy to do that.
Why don't we go into non-public just for a minute?
For clarity.
I already had a hissy about that.
I know you did, so let's, let's go into non-public for clarity.
Yes, I'd like to clarify how it's going to work. Okay.
All right, so...
So would someone like to move, would someone like to move to go into non-public?
I'd move to go into non-public under...
RSA 91-A colon 32A roll call, please, sir? Yes?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Meeting adjourned.